Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Special Meeting of Council, held December the eighth, two thousand and fifteen. We'll have the approval of the agenda. It was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie that council approves the agenda of its special meeting of December the eighth, two thousand and fifteen as presented. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Reports of municipal officers and communications. The Director of Physical Services, Mark, you're going to come to speak on the construction management at risk for the new Aquatic Center.
Thank you. So the first report, I'll speak to the recommendation to award the Construction Management at Risk contract to Montith Building Group. We've received five submissions for this process. The Construction Manager at Risk, we reviewed them and with our evaluation committee, we conducted interviews and reference checks, and we're making the recommendation to award this contract to Montith. There's four phases within this contract with Montith from design, pre-construction phase, bidding, award phase, construction phase, warranty phase. So the Construction Manager at Risk, the Montith Group will work right at the outset. Their responsibility is work with the architect to come up with the design for the pool. They would, they're also responsible then to put out all the bid packages for the subtrades, to get the site prepped and ready, construction trailers, temporary power, and prepare for complete construction. At the fifty percent design phase, they will then have to come up with a guaranteed maximum price within the town's budget for the construction of the project, to be accounted with the constructor. At that point, if they don't meet our budget, we can release them, and they would lose ten percent of their holdback from the previous work. So there is an incentive for their, for them to work with the town and the architect to come up with that guaranteed maximum price. Then they also work through the warranty phase after the construction is over to make sure that everything's working, there's no outstanding issues or remaining work to be done. So they have a large role within this project and a major part of the team. The, if you look at the bids, the five bids we received, although it's not the lowest, there was a provision in the RFP that to guard against people lowballing the bid, trying to get their foot in the door. We see this often in construction when you then have to watch your contract and ensure that they're not, you're not being hit with extra after extra to make up the difference. In the evaluation, the lower bidder, they didn't have the experience with the Mertha Pool, the Construction Manager at Risk experience either, that we weren't comfortable with their proposal. So we deem them non-responsive based on the way the RFP was written. The two top ones, again, like I said, we did have an interview process, reference checks, and evaluation, so the evaluation team is comfortable recommending award to Montith Building Group.
Counselor Morgan.
Thanks, Mark. This obviously sounds like a really good approach to getting this done. Can you just clarify though, Mark, what the difference is between the nine point six million and the guaranteed maximum price? Is there, what's going to be the difference between those two numbers?
Well, the guaranteed maximum price is just for the construction itself. So the design phase goes on.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. The nine point six million in the total budget.
Right.
And then the award for this contract.
Okay, so that's subtracted from the nine point six?
Yeah, subtract from the total budget, and then the architect, and then the guaranteed maximum price would be...
Just for the construction?
The remainder budget for the construction of the facility, yes.
Okay. Now, the construction will actually be Montith, right? I mean...
Yeah, they're brought on at the beginning, and the intent is they would become the constructor.
Right.
And with the subtrades, manage the subtrades as well.
Okay.
That way, when they're involved in the design, they can discuss with the architect about constructability, the issues they see in the north, the materials that were more readily available, not to have a problem with schedule. It's just a good team work to get there.
And we've worked with Montith before, right?
Montith, yes. They've worked with the town on the TPR project.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Barker.
Going about the award in the contract this way, does it provide for an opportunity for local contractors to bid on certain aspects of it from a subtrade perspective?
That was put out in the RFP that was a preference for the town to look at local contractors. The, Montith has worked in the area before, and they are looking to hire as much local as possible. They would break up bid packages to ensure that local contractors can bid on them, as well as their, well, I guess they're committed to work as much with the community as possible. In the interview, they're very community orientated.
Perfect, thank you.
Mark, we use the Construction Manager for the wastewater?
That was a completely different process with the wastewater treatment plant. It was a design, bid, build process. We had a Aqua Engineering as the project manager, so they would oversee the payment certificates and the overall project. This is a little different process in procurement.
Thank you.
Counselor Kylie.
Yes, I'm just in agreement with what Counselor Morgan is saying. I think we're going to have a better control over the costs and the quality of the build. It's a good route to go, so I support that.
Counselor Morgan.
Just one more question, Mark, that popped into my head. If there are cost overruns, is that absorbed by the contractor?
Once the guaranteed maximum price is established, that's, the name Construction Manager at Risk, that's their risk portion. So at that guaranteed maximum price, they cannot hit us with additional extras unless the town requests changes, then it's a change order.
Counselor Shamyard.
So there's a part of our architect there, so are they going to submit to get some new design, or are we using the same design we had before?
No, the next step is, we've, we had an expression of interest out already for the architect and prime consultant. We're at the point of getting their price proposals in, and then we will hire the architect in consultation with the Construction Manager to, and then award that phase.
So do we award this, or...
We do, town does.
Or Montith? Oh, we do that, right. So right now it's all out, and then people will be bidding on it and bringing us some new ideas?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the intent.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark, on that, and that'll come back in the form of a bylaw very shortly. And now we're at the B, Proposed Two Thousand and Sixteen Water and Waterworks Budget and Water Rates.
Since the last meeting, I've put together more information as requested, the water budget, including the sanitary budget as well because of the interrelation. We met with the Finance Chair and Counselor Roman on Monday and reviewed the budget with them, and I put together the report. So I'll go through the report, and then if there's any other questions. So again, the projected revenues at year end right now, I projected a hundred thousand. The revenues are coming in over, and the expenses are a bit over, but we're looking at still a projected surplus of a hundred thousand to be directed to Waterworks. The background portion, last year, council passed a bylaw that with Ontario, that allowed an agreement with Ontario Clean Water Agency to act as operating authority for the water treatment plant, wastewater plant, and Swastika wastewater treatment plant, and all associated lift stations, water towers, water control buildings. That was transferred to Aqqa in January twenty fifteen. The town portion, we still continue to operate the water distribution and sanitary collection system with our Waterworks Town Forces. Budgeting for sanitary and water and sanitary services are interrelated as both the contracted services and the town forces work in both budgets. The contracted services costs are set out by Aqua through their service agreement with the percentage increases identified in there by year. It's a five-year agreement. Budgeting for town forces, when we look at the historic trend, we budget their, all their wages, split between water and sanitary at sixty-five percent water and thirty-five percent sanitary. Review of the contracted services versus the town forces was done in twenty fourteen when we were looking at moving to this, looking at Aqua or contracting out services. At that time, there's showing approximately two hundred forty thousand possible savings with contracted services as a result of contracting all services, the water and the wastewater programs. They had a, they were able to cost share between the programs and use the same staff to operate these facilities, so we saw savings. Twenty fifteen, the sanitary budget in the end was increased to cover off the remaining salaries of the Utilities Division that was disbanded and benefits. Electrical power of the new wastewater facility was higher than the planned, a hundred forty-five thousand than estimated for the year. This is due to operating the new plant with all the new equipment. There's, there's, everything has a redundant piece of equipment, so everything had to be run to make sure it was operational through the warranty period. So we did see a higher demand in power, and that was within the first year of that plant operating. These expenses have basically cut out the anticipated savings in year. For twenty sixteen, the budget will have to account for these higher utility costs, increased wages, and the two percent increase in contracted services. Given these are basically uncontrollable costs, we're still looking at approximately two hundred thousand savings in the water budget by contracting out the operation of the plant. I did do, it's not in the report, but I did do a summary or a trial budget with the Utilities Department in and contracted services out, and I would see because of the hydro costs and the uncontrollable costs, it would be higher, about approximately two hundred thousand higher than what's going to be presented later on in the sanitary budget. Twenty fifteen, all contracted services remained as per service agreement. Aqua did do the additional capital and maintenance work that was identified in the service agreement last year, so that the plant was brought up to, not speed, but getting work done that was necessary to ensure that the plant would continue. Twenty fifteen, we're looking, the town crews spent approximately sixty-seven percent of the time working in the water budget and activities, main breaks, water service breaks, valves, valve chambers, hydrant repairs, thawing, water on, water off, meter reading. We had eight main breaks last year, ten water service breaks, a hundred and forty-three frozen water calls. All these activities, you know, planned for them, as many, so there was additional overtime, hired equipment, roads crews, labors, equipment, materials, and restoration work with all these main breaks and activities that had to be conducted. We can't not fix the system. It's obviously a safety and to deliver safe, clean drinking water. Sorry. In twenty fifteen, the town's crews spent thirty percent, three percent of their time working on the sanitary budget. In that budget, they look, they work on repairs, maintenance, sanitary system, block sewers, digging and repairing, replacing sewer lines, sewer inspections, the flushing program, thawing frozen water services, conducting camera inspections, and responding to complaints, as well as the restoration work that's required for any of the digging jobs. So what I'm proposing to council is, as proposed last week, is to have a two percent rate increase for twenty sixteen with proposed hundred thousand transferred to the Water Reserve Fund. It's necessary for planning for future upgrades and repairs. The two percent would cover the additional costs of hydro, gas, wages, benefits as well. Just in perspective, a two percent increase will represent approximately a dollar sixty to a dollar eighty per average, household per quarter, and six dollars to eight dollars per year for the average household. Back to the Waterworks reserves, the hundred thousand put in this year will allow us to bring it up to three hundred thirty-seven, and with twenty sixteen, we bring it up to four hundred forty-seven thousand in reserves, pending any other capital work that council approves in the capital budget for water. A five percent increase would allow additional money to be put to reserve as identified last week as well. So we've put together, while the user fees, the, there is a brief breakdown on the budget that was provided on the water and the sanitary by year in the activities, as well as the actuals in twenty fifteen. You're looking, right now, it's, we're under budget by eighty-five thousand to go to reserves, with two other metered water readings coming in where I anticipate that to come up with two hundred thousand, and more than that, but offsetting expenses for the last month. Should bring it in at a hundred thousand. Sanitary, these are proposed numbers, although we're not passing sanitary at this point, but we're just looking at where we're at. And the twenty sixteen proposed, as you'll see, it's back up to one point two and change where it was prior, prior years by twenty fourteen. But again, running a budget without the contracted services, you would see a higher amount, approximately two hundred thousand.
Counselor Morgan.
Mark, thanks very much for this additional information. I think it gives everybody a clearer picture. Just had a couple of quick questions. When you talk about the electrical cost, a hundred and forty-five thousand, is that over and above what you estimated, or is that the total amount?
That was, that was over the estimated amount.
And the estimated amount would have been...
It was one thirty-five, so it was close to the two eighty.
Really? So going forward, do you think we're going to save, or is this plant going to, in reality, cost us a lot more to run electrically wise?
Well, going forward, we looked at the last few months, and it was, it's hard to look at a full year to try and guess because we were running extra power. I didn't want to reduce it more than the two eighty because the two months really didn't give us a good picture, but we could extrapolate that it could end up being that much. We are, they are looking at, you know, running it efficiently with the centrifuge has some tweaking to do, it's a new plant, how many times they have to operate that, that's a big draw on the power. The seasonal disinfection with UV will make a difference, if it's not ran twelve months a year, and then optimizing the rest of the process in year. And we're hoping for savings, and Aqua's striving for that end as well.
But right now, we're still looking at about at least a hundred thousand dollars more than we thought it was going to take to run the plant?
Well, that's what it's showing up at.
Right.
We did have the architects and the engineers look at it and do their evaluation of what, where they thought it would come in, and that's what we budgeted for, but we're seeing higher.
Okay. With the exceptional year that we had last year with all the water main breaks and whatnot, what would you say is the amount that we went over budget just in that area, like as far as unexpected work that had to be done?
Well, you're going to see the increase in the materials and supplies to repair those breaks, as well as the overtime. And when you look at the percentage split, any really, any extra time spent in water was due to the unplanned activities. A dollar figure, I don't have that right now.
Okay, I guess where I'm, where I'm going with that is that, I'm not sure, but maybe that sort of amount in the future should be, you know, we should look at putting more into reserves and pulling those numbers out of reserves rather than out of the operating budget going forward, because we've always sort of advocated around the table to ask our managers to, to, you know, scrape as, as close as they can to the bone, and if there's any unforeseen circumstances, that council would be more than willing to top it up. I mean, obviously, we have to, but just so that we don't, you know, on a go-forward basis, look at that as a normal situation, just putting it out there.
It's a good point. It is an operations activity to repair these pieces. Coming to council to look at drawing from the reserves to cover an operational aspect at the time may not be efficient. There was a question raised last week about identifying the offsetting amounts in the sanitary budget if we're working more on the water, and recognizing those. The other aspect is the roads crew working within the water budget for the digging jobs. They have the equipment, and it's, it's actually cheaper than hiring contracted trucks all the time, so we try and work, work that way. But to reckon, to move those numbers around after the fact, you're then looking at the tax rate, the tax levy paying for work in water, which the water has to be self-sustaining through water billings. So one of the solutions to that is looking, waiting at the end of the year as things settle out, looking at the, while the savings or the difference within the water and the, or the sanitary and the roads budget, at that point, council could make a decision to add more money to the Waterworks Reserve Fund in, in a similar amount, so that those, that gets picked up again somewhere and it's recognized somewhere. And that would always get closer to ensuring that if we are over budget, that the amount stated for Waterworks reserves is actually transferred there in a, in the full amount.
Counselor Roman.
Yeah, my concern with all of the budget, there's two aspects to it. The first one being the taxes and the proposed entities. We met yesterday with yourself and your staff, and, you know, it's evident that we need to budget more, and so as far as the proposed entities, we're okay with that. Now, with respect to reserve, we, we had budgeted, we were hoping to see a hundred thousand, I hope so. Transfer to reserves, you're saying by year end, we may get a hundred, but I'm a little skeptical. I'm thinking we might not even hit that. It, it's unfortunate because the money's, the money's there, but it's not. The money, the money's sitting in the sanitary budget, and as you said, there's really, there really isn't a mechanism to transfer that money into the water budget. So it's, it, it gets back to my point that we really need to be combining these, these two budgets. We can't predict the future. We don't know, you know, where the, where the majority of the work is going to take place next year. So a year, a year from now, we're going to be sitting in the same, same spot. You can budget as much as you want for transfer to reserves, but it's really just what's left gets transferred, that's, there's no other way to look at it. So I'm actually going to bring forward a motion, I think, that we combine these two budgets in time for two thousand and seventeen, because I'm, I'm really not happy with the way that this unfolds. I would have liked to have seen that money transferred into reserves, and I, I think this is probably the only way we're going to be able to accomplish that, is to combine the two, so that's really all I have to say.
We are planning to do the rate study this year for water and sewer rates that will give us the information to actually combine them or separate the sanitary out of the tax levy. The process started last year. Because the plan hadn't been operating for a year, we held off, so that the, when the study is done, they're working on better information to make sure that they get the rates properly the first time. So that is going forward this year. That'll be presented to council in conjunction with your decision to move that budget in or out of the operating to a separate budget.
When do you expect to see that report, Mark?
We had estimates done last year to do it, so it's just a matter of updating those. We're going to look at getting those numbers, figures in for the study early in the year, and then allow them to bring it, bring it forward. I suspect possibly by the spring, if not the summer. We'd like to get that done as early as possible to give council enough time to digest it and make a call way ahead of the next year's, well, water and sanitary budgeting time.
Counselor Barker.
There's further discussion after you left, Jim, too, about with regards to the, what's the word I'm looking for, capital reserves for the Waterworks, is having a separate column so we can monitor quarterly, putting twenty-five thousand, like say, for the sake of argument, it's a hundred thousand we're looking to transfer in, twenty-five thousand every quarter, and looking where it brings us so that we don't cut ourselves short from a cash flow perspective? So we are looking at that so we can monitor and see where we're at from a budgeting perspective, including the, the transfer payments in as a way until we can sort out. The other thing is legislation. I don't know if we can take the budget, combine the two, without actually having to physically take out and incorporate in the, the water bill, the sewer bill as well, so there's other legislation we have to be mindful of when, when moving forward, so.
Counselor Kylie.
Yes, Mark and Jim, first of all, thanks for putting together this summary of the Waterworks and the sanitary. I think it does give us a clearer picture, as Counselor Morgan had said. Overall, I'm comfortable with the two percent increase, and my big concern, I mentioned before, was the reserves, as we all have said, and I think we're going to be keeping a closer eye on it this year to try and maintain that and reach that level, because to pick a number and then not, you know, whatever's left over doesn't sit well. I know it's difficult, but we're going to have to be very conscious of the budget this year in order to meet that hundred thousand, or reserve. So in any event, as I said, I do support what you're saying here in the budget, and on the short timeframe you put this all together, you did a good job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. I guess it wasn't that many years ago where we were under two hundred thousand dollars in reserve, I think it was three or four years ago. So it's... So it's, at that time, we had planned on putting a little bit every year. Now we're up to four hundred, close to four hundred and fifty thousand for the 216, and so we're heading in the right direction. I think our target that we had talked about back then was around five hundred thousand, I think, would be something, would be a good target. But I think I do support the two percent increase. It's, it gets us towards that with reserves, and it's not a lot of money, eh? It's about six dollars a year, about three small Tim Hortons coffees a year extra. But we are compelled by law, by the Act, to make water self-sustaining, as you said earlier, and I think we're heading in that direction. If there's no more questions, thank you very much. I just, I do have a resolution. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Barker that council approves the 216 water budget as presented with a two percent increase in the water rates. All in favor? Thank you. Carrie?
So we have the reading of the bylaws. It was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie. That bylaw fifteen dash one one nine being a bylaw to authorize Mayor and Clerk to execute an agreement with NOHFC for funding towards the new aquatic center, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Barker. That bylaw fifteen dash one twenty being a bylaw to authorize Mayor and Clerk to execute an agreement with Montith Building Group for project management at risk services for the construction of the new aquatic center, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. And it was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Barker that council adjourn a special meeting of December the eighth, 2015, to an in-camera meeting to discuss one property issue. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.